Call the meeting to order, roll call please.
First class.
Mayor Rankin?
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Selaya?
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Here.
Councilmember Montano is absent. Councilmember Walters? Councilmember Woolridge?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Need a motion?
Make a motion. We adjourned to executive session.
Second?
We have motion and second to adjourn to executive session. Any other discussion? Hearing none on call for question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Need a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn from executive session.
Second.
We have motion and second to adjourn from executive session. Any other discussion? Hearing none on call for question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion cast. Tara, you give the invocation tonight, please. After the invocation, if you remain standing for the pledge of allegiance, please.
Will you bow your head as I pray? Dear wise and loving Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings, for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thanks, all well, for the freedom to embrace you or the freedom to reject you. Thanks for loving us even so, from your boundless and gracious natures. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, it's not listed on the agenda. Vice Mayor would like to make a comment.
I direct this to staff and council. I direct this to those persons wishing to run for council in this next election. I'd like to take this time to let you know I will not seek reelection this year. But I will not rule out the 2016. I thank you all. Thank you.
This is the first call to the public for public comment on issues within jurisdiction of town council. Council rules limit comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call of the public unless matters are properly noticed for discussion or legal action. At this time, and there is a three-minute time limit on it. Samantha Schultz?
Hello, council members and mayor. I'm Samantha Schultz, 525 East Butte, Florence, Arizona. Is this a government building? Well, I've been told that if the flag is torn, ripped, or set on the ground, that it is to be burned. And your flag outside has rips and torns in it. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Direct staff to take care of that immediately. Staff, get the word? Okay. Denise Colart?
Denise Colart, Florence Gardens, mayor, council, and all the staff that's in this room. I want to address a letter that was written by a homeowner in Florence Gardens. It was in the paper two weeks ago. In that letter, he attacked the mayor, called him some awful names. I feel like he attacked the council and the staff, town staff, by saying our town is not run well. While I've had times that I've disagreed with some of your decisions, I have never felt this way. He made comments about buying Johnson Utilities and the annexation and about how we run things in the town. This man is not a voting member of this community. In fact, the day the letter hit the newspaper, he was on his way back to Oregon. Not that he doesn't have the right to voice his opinion, that's what America's about, but I don't think he had to attack everybody when he did it. I want everyone that's watching this evening to understand that his opinions, and that's all they are, should not sway them one way or another about voting for Johnson Utilities. They need to do their homework and see what a benefit or a non-benefit it would be to purchase the utility company. Don't listen to people that have no skin in the game. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any other member of the council have anything like, or a member of the audience have anything they'd like to address and call to the public? Seeing no movement, I close. Call to the public.
Item eight, public hearings and presentations. Item A, public hearing on a zone change request by the town of Florence to change existing zoning on multiple properties from neighborhood to downtown commercial and first reading of ordinance number 610-14. An ordinance of the town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona, approving the downtown commercial DZC zone change located in an area general bound by Ruggles Street to the north, Butte Avenue to the south, Bailey Street to the west, and Penal Street to the east and including property located at the southeast corner of Penal Street and Eighth Street. Mr. Ekoff will be handling this item.
Mark?
Good evening, mayor and council. When we adopted the changes to the DC zoning district a while back, we spoke about how ultimately we would like to expand the utilization of the district. Initially, we applied it on Main Street on all the properties from Butte to Ruggles. But the intent was to continue to go a couple blocks west and a couple blocks east. The reason for that is the DC zoning district allows for the type of development patterns really that historically were established in that core of downtown Florence, such as building out two lot lines, not really accommodating for retention on your site or parking on your site, such as having mixed uses, maybe residential use in the same building as a commercial building. Maybe as we've seen already on Main Street, a residential unit on top of a commercial or an office use. So what we wanted to do when we amended, when we first created the DC district and then subsequently we amended it, is to allow for this flexibility and allow for this opportunity to be able to continue to adapt the uses within this area, to reuse these buildings, and also to allow for infill development on these properties. Obviously, with a typical zoning district like an NO that a lot of these properties are that we're talking about tonight, or a B2, they have substantial setbacks in parking requirements. You would never be able to develop on any of these small lots that are located down in this area. So what we have tonight is the, essentially, this is the third phase of implementing the DC zoning district downtown. And we're going to continue to work on gathering additional properties to bring forward to you. But we have through a mail effort and through a door-to-door effort gone to all the properties that you see here and several more on this side of Bailey Street. And spoke to them about the opportunity to change their zoning to DC and the benefits of doing so if they were interested. We, at one point, were doing this concurrent with a couple of property owners willing to file their own applications. Within, as we built up momentum and more and more people came to the table and said, "Yeah, I'm interested in doing that. It sounds like a great opportunity." We then consolidated all the three, the three applications into one application and the town took the lead on doing that. So you'll see, we do have several properties here. There's 13 there total. It does include the Brunnen Camp Building, of course. But all the rest of them are privately owned and developed parcels. And we do have the Adobe House at H Street in Penal, so we went on the other side of Penal. And that's already proven to be a benefit because they came in the other day and in part of the redeveloping their home, they would actually like to have a second dwelling unit on the property. That building has a separate wing in it. And under the DC zoning district, they actually can do that. So this ordinance is already having an immediate benefit in that area. Planning and Zoning Commission has sent you a unanimous favorable recommendation. And tonight is just a public hearing, and we'll move it forward to action at the next meeting. I'd be happy to address any questions you may have.
Any member of the council have any question? Mark? Mark, I noticed that some of the properties aren't included. Why are they excluded on Bailey, on Penal Street mainly?
Well, mayor and council, for this round, we did try to get in every single property between Bailey and Penal and between Ruggles and Butte. And there were still a couple of property owners that weren't quite ready to come in. Although, just recently, we have been approached by one or two of them that have kind of come to the table again. So I think we may be able to get a few more, and hopefully over time we'll pick up some additional ones and then at least fill in that entire area. And then we'd like to go on the other side of Main Street as well and expand it that way.
You're talking about on Granite Street?
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Any other member of the council have any questions? If not, I'll open up a public hearing. Any member of the audience have any questions? Would like to make any comment? Seeing no movement, I'll close the public hearing.
Item B, public hearing on ordinance number 606-13. An ordinance of the town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona, amending the Town of Florence Code and ordinances titled 15 Land Development Uses Chapter 150, Development Code Section 150.047, District Used Regulations Table A, and establishing a new rural residential esquestra- Thank you.
Equestrian.
Subdivision RRES zoning district sections. Sorry.
Be a horse.
That's right. Mr. Ekoff will be handling this item.
Mayor, council, we had this particular ordinance in front of you a while back, and we were directed to bring it back to the Planning Commission, have them reconsider it. And they also received the comments that were, that came forward at the council meeting, comments that were made by council and comments that were made by the public. There also has been additional public comment made along the way and at the hearing at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. When it went back to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the commission slightly modified the ordinance that had previously been presented back to you for action. And the ordinance today, ordinance number 606-13, the bullet points are, would allow two horses per lot, which is consistent with the current Penal County zoning. It would allow site-built homes and manufactured homes, which would reflect the zoning, but more appropriately, really, the existing conditions as there are both manufactured homes and site-built homes out in that area. Though we do not have to comply with the CCNRs for the development. The proposed ordinance has a provision for FFA, 4H, or similar, which is consistent with those CCNRs. And that's an issue that came up at the meetings that we had here, mayor and council. And then also, this proposed zoning is no more intense than the current county zoning. And again, when you think about comparable zoning, that is the rule of thumb to follow, that it's not identical, it's not exact, but it's comparable and not more, and not more intense. And that is what you have presented to you, and that is what you have received a unanimous recommendation for, from the Planning and Zoning Commission. And other than those points, the highlights are fairly consistent with what we spoke about before. It is a residential zoning district. It is one dwelling unit per lot. The lot size is a minimum of 42,000 square feet, which is appropriate for that area because all the lots are at least that size. And there are additional provisions in the ordinance speaking out on the standards for maintaining the agricultural animal horses on the property or the future farmers' animals that may kept on the property. And with that, be happy to address questions. This is a public hearing tonight on this item.
Any member of the council have any question? Mark, Tara?
I do. In some of the letters that we received, some other residents expressed concern over some of the burrows. Does this ordinance actually address that in some way as well?
Mayor, council members, that was a good question. Thank you. We have had discussions with the county, and they have confirmed in their definitions that a horse is a horse and a burrow or a donkey or the other variety, which I won't name here, are not horses. And that would be our interpretation as well, that a horse is a horse. So when it says two horses, it is straight to what the county zoning allows, inconsistent again with the CCNRs.
So that would mean the people that have the burrows would need to?
I believe that, I believe we have knowledge that there is at least one and possibly two units out there at the most that may have a burrow or a donkey.
So they would need to relocate?
And that would be non-conforming according to the current county zoning, and if it would be brought in, it would be non-conforming as well.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Originally, when we were discussing this, there was mention of their HOA. Now, that HOA, I believe, still stands, does it not?
There are recorded, members of the council, vice mayor, there are recorded CCNRs, which I believe the town attorney has interpreted for you are recorded and valid for the property. But to our knowledge, the HOA was disbanded a while back, and so there is no external body, a homeowners association, to maintain those. But CCNRs can always be enforced on a private basis, a homeowner basis or civil basis. They still apply. And at some point, Mr. Manado could clarify, but I believe that the HOA could be reestablished and follow those CCNRs as well.
Their rules and regulations on this do actually still stand. Is that correct?
Yes, Vice Mayor and mayor and members of the council, thank you. I do not believe that the homeowners association was ever officially dissolved. I think you could say it ceased to function for whatever reason. But that was not uncommon phenomenon when we experienced the problems in real estate that we saw beginning in 2008 and 2009 because a lot of people lost their homes. Many of the homeowners associations didn't have the dues or the revenue to really fulfill their responsibilities. But the fact of having a homeowners association in existence and having recorded the declaration as well as all the covenants and restrictions, these are legal obligations that are binding, I believe, on the property regardless of whether or not you have an enforcement entity at the moment. In other words, these are promises people make that are of record and are recorded against their properties. They run with the land, you know, binding not only the current owners but the future owners of those properties. So although the enforcement situation may need to be improved there within the homeowners association, nonetheless, I read the declaration of homeowners association that was filed by the man that subdivided the property, and it is enforceable by any individual owner. So you actually don't have to have a board of directors or a homeowners association. Anybody that owns a property in that subdivision can legally enforce the covenants by going to court and requesting relief from the courts.
So legally, we can go ahead with what we're trying to do and set up?
I believe so.
Even though their HOA is still in place?
Well, it's two different sets of requirements, Vice Mayor. You have the promises that were made by the people that decided to buy the properties. Those are your covenants and your restrictions. And then there's the zoning. The people that drew up the homeowners association document could structure the covenants any way they desired, depending on what they deemed to be desirable for the community. And it could be more restrictive than what you've done with the zoning. But yet, even if that's the case, because you make that promise when you buy the property and you sign the covenants, it's enforceable. But all we have a legal responsibility, I believe, to enforce is our own zoning requirements.
Okay. Thank you.
Let me ask this. The, we know that the homeowners association is not a viable entity at this time. The CCNRs can be changed. Is that correct?
They could be. If they convened a meeting of the homeowners association and got a vote, I believe it would have to be of a majority.
So the homeowners association would have to get together, and then they would, then that's where your attorneys come in?
They could modify the covenants if they all decided to do it.
Right. And I would then ask, on the county zoning that's out there now, the area that we're, or our ordinance that we want to pass, it's state law that states that we have to go closest to. Is that correct?
Mayor, members of the council, the current county zoning is manufactured home. And the county does admit that that's in a regular application of zoning on that particular property. And there is some history of how that was established. But that zoning is manufactured home. It allows the manufactured homes. It allows the two horses. And the state law is specific in annexation when we're doing comparable zoning that they cannot be any more intense.
Any more stricter, in other words?
Any more intense. And an example would be if the zoning in the county was commercial on a property, we couldn't bring the property in as industrial. If it's zoned for single-family homes, we couldn't bring it in for duplexes.
Right. And you're in the opinion that ordinance meets all those standards?
Mayor, council, in our opinion and the Planning and Zoning Commission's opinion, and again, this has been to about four or five meetings in front of them, they are pleased with this ordinance and feel that it is the best approach for this particular scenario.
And can you tell me the approximate amount of properties that are out of compliance with the county ordinance as of today?
The number varies, but the county, one of the county compliance officers, he did approach us and come and meet with us. And he said that they, number one, they did clarify. They said that according to the county, they haven't just started doing enforcement, that they've been doing ongoing enforcement. And there are probably a dozen properties or so that are notably out of compliance. Plus or minus, it depends on any day that you might go out there. But they are working, the county has advised us that they are working to remedy all of those situations.
And how are they working to remedy?
They actually have cited anybody who is in violation of the county ordinance.
Is there any way a property owner prior to annexation can do anything with the county to become compliant while they're out of compliance?
Well, mayor and council, the county's ordinance is also very, very limited in that it just allows the two horses. So there's really not any leeway on that. And so that is what the county is enforcing at this time. If you have more than the two horses, they are enforcing that. So I don't know that there would be a way for anybody that has more agricultural animals than that to come into compliance. And in fact, I'm not even, I don't even believe that the MH zoning has a provision for the 4H or future farmers, which we've inserted in our code, which would be a little more accommodating.
At this time, I'm open to the public hearing. If anyone would like to talk on this matter, please come forward to the microphone.
Hello. My name's Kelly Nevis, and I live in Wild Horse Estates. Once upon a time, for a minute and a half, I thought I was going to be in favor of annexation. When the town manager recommended sending the previous zoning proposal back to P&amp;Z based on the majority signatures we had collected, I thought, finally, someone's starting to use their brain in this town. We had attended one of the first annexation meetings, and from that day, I've asked, what will happen to our animals? Nothing matters except our animals. I now know the answer to that question, and it's unacceptable. I have heard so many misstatements, incorrect information, and conflicting pieces of law and truth that it would take a rocket scientist to make head or tails of it all. And let me just add, for those people who continue to bring up our CCNRs and then talk out of the other side of their mouths about all of us doing wrong, have them look at the section that doesn't allow block wall fencing and then come talk to me. Then tell them to read the section on animals and pets and figure out which side of their mouths they want to speak from next. Leaving all of that aside for a moment, let's talk about the town of Florence. You were given a great opportunity to make some forward-thinking changes for the good of the town and future rural developments. Yet, no one is stepping up to the plate. Our subdivision, which began its life in 2001, used to be zoned for animals. Then it was zoned to MH, as we're all painfully aware, when 15 manufactured homes were installed. Then it was sold to a developer who obtained 69 site-built building permits by mistake, per the county. Let's think about that for a minute. 69 mistakes. No one caught it 69 times. Oh my. But that's not the town's problem. It's the resident's problem, and one will be dealing with soon enough. However, you have 84 homes on minimum one-acre parcels, and we can have two horses, period. My mom lives on a 5,200-square-foot parcel in a city in California, and she can have six chickens and a pet skunk if she'd like. If she had neighbors like the two couples wreaking all the havoc in our subdivision, she wouldn't need a skunk. The town of Gilbert just voted through allowing chickens down to 6,000 square feet. The majority of residents in Wild Horse Estates voted via signature petition for four animal units. And still, to this minute, no one has told me how they want those signatures verified, only that they are unverifiable, which is an outright lie. At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of late, we had well over a majority of residents in person and in print, and we all expressed our preference for four animal units, option C. Just asked the liaison, Bill Hawkins. He was putting his two cents in against us, but he heard firsthand what the majority wanted. He said the majority doesn't count, only the law counts. But your town attorneys can't even agree on what the law says. So let's talk about this law for a moment. It's like those people who pick and choose the Bible verses which suit them, a moving target. Mark Ekoff and your town attorney both say per the annexation rules and statutes that the new zoning for Wild Horse Estates can't be more restrictive or intense than what we have now. The assistant town attorney and others have said it can't be more generous than what we have now. If your own legal beagles can't agree on the law and the statute, what the heck are the rest of us supposed to rely upon? And since we're on the topic, if you all finally decide that it can't be more restrictive than our current zoning, then you're going to have to rewrite your proposed zoning again because there is nothing in our current MH zoning that states we cannot graze our horses in our front yards. And our CCNRs do not require us to be members of 4H to keep 4H animals on our property. Regardless of all of this information and the efforts I've made along with other residents to help you get it right, the town of Florence had a great opportunity, and so far, they've tossed it away. The council has the opportunity to override that and go with option C, or more simply, four animal units.
Ma'am, your three minutes are up.
I have one paragraph left.
That's it. I'm sorry.
Okay, then I'll put a line, and somebody can come and finish reading it.
Thank you.
Hi, council. My name is Lori Beck. I'm also in the Wild Horse Estates. And I'd just like to finish reading what Kelly had here. Regardless of all this information and efforts- Regardless of all this information and efforts I've made, along with other residents, to help you get it right, the town of Florence had a great opportunity, and so far, they've tossed it away. The council has the opportunity to override that and go with option C, or more simply, four animal units. People with animals spend money. We'll go without food ourselves, but that won't stop us from spending money on our animals. The feed store in the town shut down. That's not to say another one couldn't come back, and but if the town is going to be anti-pets, then likely it will dry up and die, along with the business trying to make it here. So while I have been your biggest advocate for annexation, I will definitely be your opposition instead, and unless the current option is overturned for what the majority of the homeowners in WHE requests. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the audience?
May I speak?
Sure.
I'm also a resident of Wild Horse Estates, and right now, I'm one of these that is supposedly in violation of the county. I have four horses. I have had four horses since I moved in here. They had other people that had and still have four horses when I moved in there. Now, I spoke with your animal control people. The definition of pets, which there is no limit on, is any domestic animal kept for pleasure and not for utility. I spoke with my attorneys. You cannot modify this definition. I have four horses that I keep for my pleasure. Therefore, by law, by definition, I'm allowed to have four horses. You cannot modify that. I mean, I've already talked to my attorneys, and they said, you are in violation of the law by saying you can only have two horses, but 15 or 20 dogs, because you deem something this size versus something this size. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
And I spoke to the county.
Just a comment, have you been cited yet by the county?
Yes, I just told you that.
No, I didn't hear that.
I said at first, I was one of those in violation.
But you didn't say if you've been cited or not, that's what I was getting at.
Well, yeah, I've just been cited, and I've been sitting with Wes and all of them, speaking. And I presented this same argument to him, but the county hasn't felt necessary to get back to me.
Okay, thank you. I just, I'm just curious, sir, thank you. Any other?
Yes, mayor and council, I have a letter. My name is Laura Willett. I'm reading it for her, she's not able to be here. She's of 10195 East Pinto Pony Drive, Wild Horse Estates. And I am writing this letter as I am unable to attend tonight's meeting due to my work schedule. I have lived in Wild Horse Estates for over a year and have enjoyed the rural lifestyle, lifestyle on my over one-acre property. This is what enticed us to move here, the atmosphere, the many, many homes with animals, horses, chickens, turkeys, goats, et cetera. I did not know that this was all in violation of county ordinance. And I myself purchased animals in May of 2013. It wasn't until March 20 of, of 2014 that I received a letter from the county that Terry McDad filed a complaint on my chickens. This is when I learned that the county had given us the wrong zoning. I found it odd that for months, this wasn't an issue. My neighbors do not have any issue with my animals, but someone who lives on the complete opposite end of the area does. But not, how can it be okay to have two 1,800-pound animals on your property, but not okay for 14 5-pound chickens? Or two Nubian Dolings, or three Shetlands, or five turkeys? The rural atmosphere, plus the size of our [inaudible] he wouldn't have been able to see them. But that derives from the atmosphere of interfacing with neighbors and plain looks ugly out here. Doesn't make sense. Mrs. McDad is what the majority wants. We are still living in a democratic country, aren't we? We are surrounded by crackerjack homes, crammed together on tiny lots with no breathing space. Our kids and grandchildren are losing out on learning what it means to be with taking care of animals, gardens that grow your food, property that has, everyone wonders why the kids nowadays are obese. And the new workforce teenagers have no work ethic, and can't fathom what hard work is. I can tell you, my grandchildren love coming to see us, to play with the animals, feed them, gather eggs. To take that away would be heartbreaking for me, and another blow to teaching our younger generation independence and responsibility. If you plan on keeping the zoning the same, I vote for no annexation. On a side note, I found one of your councilmen, Bill Hawkins, to be disrespectful, rude, and offensive at the zoning hearing. His night remarks under his breath when proponents are changing, proponents of changing zoning spoke, his remarks could amure
Ma'am, your three minutes are up, I'm sorry.
Heard by those sitting around him. Thank you.
My name's Suang Gojanola, and I live in the subdivision Crestfield Manor, just north to Wild Horse Estates. Personally, I feel annexation would be a positive move. A couple from Wild Horse Estates had come through our neighborhood and was misforming some of our neighbors and trying to sway them from annexation by saying that we would have higher taxes and that the city of Florence would move mobile homes into our subdivision. But it would be a shame to let a few misguided people ruin our neighborhoods by trashing up their properties, having too many animals, the smells, the flies, and the noise, et cetera. It is my understanding that Wild Horse has CCR guidelines when the buyers bought their properties, just as we at Crestfield Manor had HOA guidelines. I have lived here since 2011, relocated from Alaska, and have made new friends in my neighborhood, and also in Wild Horse Estates. And my neighbors take pride in their homeownership. The number of types of livestock and fowl that live in Wild Horse has a direct impact on our Crestfield home, manor, values, and our quality of life. We are aware that the town of Florence is part of the proposed annexation, is developing a new town zoning ordinance to be applied to Wild Horse upon successful annexation. Excuse me. If annexation is approved, the town zoning guidance to Wild Horse should conform to the requirements of the present Penal County codes. We expect the town, I just read that, of Florence, upon successful annexation, will strictly enforce all ordinance and bring any noncompliant parcels in Wild Horse into compliance. The town must do everything in its power to eliminate the adverse impact on the Crestfield Manor residents by bringing those out-of-control property owners in Wild Horse into compliance. Although I am for, although I am for annexation in the town of Florence, due to close proximity of our new towns, Anthem Fire Protection and Police Services, we are watching and waiting to see how the town of Florence resolves the Wild Horse zoning ordinance before rescinding my vote for annexation. Thank you.
Wait a minute, I need to ask you a question. You said that there were people out there telling you lies about our annexation?
Yes, last fall. I had several neighbors come to me and were asking me about the annexation.
And they'd been told different information on it?
Yes.
And what was some of that information they were told?
That we would have higher property taxes, that the city of Florence would move mobile homes into our area, which we have an HOA, there's guidelines that say what type of home can be in there. Mostly bullying, trying to influence a vote. And that was when the first letters came out.
Okay, the, the deal about the property tax, there will be a slight property tax increase?
We understand that. You have sent out in the letters stating that it would go up per $100,000 value of the home. We understand that.
The, about moving mobile homes in there? I don't know any way that any member of this council or our staff would recommend that. You live in a stick-built community, and you're going to stay?
Correct. I understand that, because I understand my HOA.
And if they, if they approach you again, tell them, call Lisa, she's taking care of our annexation, she'll be gladly straighten, straighten them out, too. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Karen Sebastiani. I live in Crestfield Manor also. I did send a letter that you may have received. To me, it's a very simple thing. You have CCNRs. Whether you have an HOA that's active or not, you still have CCNRs. The county has zoning, you know what that, the county zoning is. If you don't, you didn't do your due diligence, and that's your fault. It has nothing to do with trying to force a bunch of animals or whatever you want to do. If you want to change the animal thing, then why can't I have more than four animals on my lot, in my yard? I can put in a couple horses. That's insane. It doesn't make any sense. I don't mind if they have two horses. Two horses is what I knew they were supposed to have. I have no problem with that. I do have a problem with hearing a braying donkey. I have a problem with hearing a rooster crowing. Those aren't supposed to be in our neighborhood. Guinea hens. What else are they going to put in over there? If you change all this, these people already show a lack of respect for the rules, the regulations, and the laws. It's very simple, they're breaking it. Are you going to have their children grow up the same way? She talks about, you know, oh, it's bad for their children. Well, so is this. They're breaking the law. I'm sorry. You need to enforce what's there, and what's there is two horses. If you want to put the 4H in there, I have no problem with that. But you need to make sure that that's what is happening, because some of these people have no children, so how are they going to be in the 4H? I don't think so. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public?
Hi, my name is Terry McDad, and I live in Wild Horse Estates. I've addressed you, gentlemen and ladies, before. I'm glad that Mrs. Nevis is, has heard all the misinformation, since she's the one that's been spreading it. She's been spreading misinformation since day one with the annexation. That's the reason that you guys had to send out five pages of frequently asked questions and answer to questions. A lot of them were like, we're going to have to have our cars inspected for emissions. And it was on and on. You have five pages of that, and that's where that misinformation was coming from. I'm also the one that called in to complain on the Colette lot. And since that complaint was called in for having chickens, they've now added two goats. So this is what we're dealing with in Wild Horse Estates. One person gets chickens, everybody has chickens. One person has goats, everyone wants goats. Everyone wants four horses, five horses, nine horses. We had one guy, nine horses in one borough, on less than, well, one-acre lot, but you got about a third of an acre, maybe even half an acre, after you take out for a house and everything else. And also, I'm the one that, Mrs. Nevis called Hitler. So she knows that I'm Hitler now. She called me Hitler at the last P and Z meeting we had. It's on, on recording, and I also sent you, gentlemen and ladies, a copy of a letter, and also gave the exact time of when that happened. So I guess state statute 9-471L is the one that, that everyone is quoting, and that's the one that the attorney has quoted, that needs to be followed, which states that we need to be close to the present zoning that we have now, which allows for two horses. As far as block walls, I do have block walls. Block walls are allowed by the CCNRs. If people read the CCNRs, all you have to do is send a letter to the HOA. And then if they don't respond within 30 days, put up your block walls. No HOA, wait 30 days, you're done. And there are 168 owners in, in there. When you look at the, the 84 lots, on average, there are two or three, in some cases, four owners per lot. And in order to get a majority of the owners, you'd have to have 168 signatures. And I have not seen 168 signatures be validated on any petition at this point in time. I'm also in favor of annexation if the zoning stays at two horses, which is what the P and Z commission recommended. Thank you for your time.
Any other member?
My name's Jim Nevis. Excuse me, I have to remove this hearing thing. I've been coming to the meetings since they started regarding this property. Several times, I have heard that the town is trying to match our MH zoning. At a recent Penal County, proposed correcting our zoning to rectify the giant mistake made by Penal County for giving out 69 illegal building permits for custom homes not allowed in manufactured home zoning. They proposed that a change back to CR-1A or R43, both of which would allow a substantial number of animals, what the, what the majority of Wild Horse Estates wants. Back in January, Bill Hawkins stated that 27 signatures that we had was not a majority, which meant to him that there was 57 that was against four horses. That's completely false. But he said he would listen to the majority. At this last planning meeting, he was there, I asked him if our 50 signatures, a majority, didn't count. He said, he responded with yes, but the council must follow the law. The planning department recommended A over B and C. C is what the 50-plus signatures in Wild Horse Estates signed a petition for, four animal units. Why shouldn't the council consider C? That's what the majority wants. This is ridiculous, that one person signed, his wife didn't sign or something, and she's automatically against. Not true. Today, our subdivision is a disaster. 69 homes out of 84 do not have rights. If one of our homes burned down to the ground, the owner, according to Penal County, would not be able to rebuild this site-built home. This town council is trying to rezone if and next, following the guidelines, not be more restrictive than the present zoning. The county knows that it screwed up, and is willing to change our zoning to CR-1A or R43. This change would allow goats, sheep, cattle, or horses. Two, yes. But why would this town council try to change our zoning to try to get as close to manufactured home zoning as possible? It is beyond me. Two wrongs do not make a right. If this town council approves A, then it will be three wrongs, and it still won't be right. To my knowledge, in Wild Horse Estates, we have three couples that really don't like animals, or have nothing to do in life but to literally drive around the subdivision to report people that they think violates.
Your three minutes are up, thank you.
My three minutes is up?
Yes, sir.
Please consider this.
Bill, you can respond.
If, if you'd have been listening to me at that meeting, the signatures on those petitions, they were not legal. they were not legal. They were, they were not, those weren't proper petitions. You have to, you have to, you have to go through proper channels and have them certified, and it has to be the owners of the property, not renters. That's why I made that statement. I, believe me, I will respect any lawful petition, and if the majority of the people want to go that direction, that's fine. But those petitions were not legal petitions, and I'm sorry, but that's, we do try to follow the law, and I'm proud of it.
The, excuse me, excuse me, we can't have discourse like that, the public comment.
I was just explaining why you said that I wasn't going along with the majority. There was no majority to go along with at that point.
This will, this issue will be voted on by the town council on the 19th of May, right here. We will make a decision, determine, offer the best information we have according to law, and that's the decision we'll make. Denise? Excuse me, sir, one more like that, I'm going to ask you to leave. Okay? Thank you.
Denise Colart, Florence Gardens. I'm speaking on behalf of Nancy and Logan. They couldn't be here this evening. She was going to send me a letter. I didn't get it before we left the house. But we have talked after a meeting here and after a P&amp;Z meeting. She and her husband live in Wild Horse Estates. Oh, thank you. She just sent and gave me the letter. I'll stop and read her letter. She lives at 23625 North Bridle Way. Before you is a very important matter of annexation. From my perspective, annexation into the town of Florence will be a good thing, not only for the property where my husband and I reside, but also for the rental property we own in Oasis Magic Ranch. Like us, many of our neighbors in Crestfield Manor want annexation because we will benefit from the town's fire and police, town water, hopefully recycling, and trash pickup. These are all services which, at this time, we pay premium prices to private companies to provide. I also appreciate the town's government setup that allows these citizens to be heard. I apologize for reminding you again, but Wild Horse Estate is not zoned, general rule, and does not allow more than two horses per property, nor does it allow any other farm animals or fowl. It's the dozen or so non-compliant households, the rule breakers, those in violation of the animal restrictions that want you to change the rules to suit them. What about the rest of us, the other 70-plus households that are adversely affected by their animals, owners, noise, and flies? We do not, we did not agree to live in a neighborhood that allowed all these animals and the problems that come with them. Our zoning ordinance, CCNRs, do not allow it. We did not put down our hard-earned money to invest in an area that's noisy, stinks, is ridden with flies. When asked, I tell people I live in Wild Horse Estates, surprisingly, several people have mentioned they have come to our neighborhood to look at homes for sale, but were turned off by the smells of animals and the trashiness of some of the properties.
Denise, three minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
She said she mailed all of you this?
I haven't seen that one.
Okay. Okay, because she told me in an email that she sent me today that she had mailed it to everybody. But she wanted me to read it also.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other comment? Again, I remind everybody, we are going to vote on this. If you already spoke once, you're not going to speak again. We have, we will vote on the May the 19th, and again, this council will follow the law as we need to go. At this, I'll close the public hearing.
Item C, Presentation on Southwest, Southeast Valley Transit System Study.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, members of the public, town staff. My name is Jorge Luna. I'm a senior service planner with Valley Metro, and I'll be presenting to you an update on the Southeast Valley Transit System Study. Also joining me tonight is Sonia Pastoralasoda. She is our community and outreach coordinator, sitting here in the audience. So what is the study purpose? Right now, again, this is just a study. We're initiating the study, and we're coming out to the member agencies from MAG, and also letting them know that we're beginning the study and the process that we're going to initiate. So what's the purpose right now? Overall, we would like to identify efficiencies and services, efficiencies and service gaps for existing and future transit services. We would like to optimize existing services where there are some transit services, identify current and unmet needs. We would like to address some changing study area conditions, increase in population, growth, connectivity, increased travel demand. We would like to develop some recommendations for addressing short, mid, and long-term transit needs, and we would also like to investigate funding strategies and partnership opportunities. So what is the study area? And we're looking at a map right now. The area bound by the black line is the study area, and we are working with the city of Tempe, town of Guadalupe, city of Mesa, city of Chandler, town of Gilbert, Queen Creek, Apache Junction, of course, the town of Florence, city of Maricopa, and Phoenix, the Awatuki Village, as well as the Hill River Indian Reservation, and the unincorporated portions of Penal and Maricopa Counties. So what are we, are we going to do in the study? We're, we have several tasks that we've outlined. We have the study kickoff. We're going to be evaluating existing and future transit needs. We're going to be identifying transit needs, develop transit recommendations, a draft report, a final report, and throughout the entire process of the study, we're going to do public outreach. And Sonia's going to talk a little bit on that outreach and some of the items that are ongoing right now. So just to give you a little bit of oversight of what's in the study area transit-wise, the lines that you see up on the map in the north, sort of northwest portion of the study area, we have circulators, neighborhood circulators, express routes, there's light rail, there's link operations, local routes, rapid commuter routes. And in the town of Florence, in the area to the sort of southeast, we have the Central Arizona Regional Transit System, or the CART, which is a great service, and it's actually been growing ridership, and it carries passengers between Florence, Coolidge, and Casa Grande. And these are just some of the general characteristics of the service area, or the services in the study area. We have 24 of the 56 Valley Metro local routes are serviced the study area. 320 of the 1,077 bus route miles are located in the study area. Four of the 15 Valley Metro key local routes are very productive routes are also in that study area. And we have several routes that meet this threshold of 2.0 boardings per mile, are very productive routes. But in addition to this, we also have, again, the CART system that connects the communities down here in Florence, Coolidge, and Casa Grande, and it's just gaining momentum, traction, and it's a service for the residents. Some of the opportunities for the south, in the Southeast Valley, is continued population growth. There's also immersion, emergence of key destinations and employment centers. And the question is, how do you best connect those? What is the information that we need or the metrics that we were going to, we're going to look at to study and analyze a productive system? There's also a strong core network in expand, that is expanding, and there is an increase in opportunities to enhance connections to the regional transit system and provide individuals jobs and access into the downtown area, the core, central Phoenix, or the rest of the metropolitan area. However, we have some issues and concerns, and what we did, we've been meeting with each and every single member agency from MAG and Valley Metro, and we've been discussing with staff on one-on-one, what are some of the key concerns, key issues that you would like us to address in the study. Again, this is just a study. Some of the concerns were, of course, service coverage area. What would that look like? Do we expand? Do we just blanket everything? Or are we tactical in the implementation or in the corridors that transit should serve? Also, route continuity at jurisdictional boundaries. Sometimes, because of the funding levels, some routes stop at city boundaries, and the passenger has to alight or get off of the bus and can't continue their trip. So what we're going to, we would like to look at is, again, a seamless service for timing, headways, or frequencies, and effective connections. We would also like to study and improve and plan for future connections into the Valley Metro high-capacity transit network, or also intercity or commuter rail services. We would like to integrate local transit and transportation plans, and also consider emerging employment and educational centers, again, providing people and residents an opportunity, a mobility opportunity, to leave their cars, give them additional options, and to leave their cars and take public transit. Other key issues and concerns are transit optimization. How do we improve existing service and squeeze a little bit more service out of what we're currently running and funding? We would also like to understand funding strategies for multi-jurisdictional services, and we would also, some of the issues and concerns were also concerns about increasing the cost of dialer rate service or paratransit service for residents. And these, again, were some of the comments that we've been meeting with your staff and staff from all the member agencies and trying to address, that we're going to try to address in this, in this study. Right now, I'll hand it over to Sonia, so she could cover the community outreach portion.
Thanks, Jorge. Again, my name is Sonia Pastoralasoda, and I'm going to be coordinating all of the community outreach for this particular project. First and foremost, we want to make sure that the public understands what the purpose of the study is and how we are coordinating and collaborating with the other towns and cities and counties that are involved. Lots of the different towns and councils are already in the process of establishing master plans or transportation plans, so obviously, we are going to continue to coordinate with them and make sure that we communicate with all stakeholders as far as the different studies are concerned. We have several tools in the toolbox on which we can use to ensure that the public is aware of this particular study and that they have an understanding of the study. And one of those tools is our website, and you can see on the slide that the website is valymetro.org/SEVTS. And on that particular website, we have an overview of the project. We also have what we call our project update, and that, I have left hard copies here at the meeting, and hopefully, all of you have a copy of this. That also is on our website, and we would appreciate it if you would share this information with your constituents, and we can always provide hard copies as well if you would like to pass those at any type of public meeting or community meeting that you may have. But most importantly is that we have a survey on that particular website, and we would really like to encourage all residents and stakeholders in the community to go to our website and to complete that particular survey. That information is what we will use to include in the report. So we will take the survey results, give it to our technical team, so that they can then establish what the short, mid, and long-term needs are and what the goals are. And that will therefore help you all to help make decisions for your constituents. So again, first and foremost, we'd like to encourage people to go to our website and complete that survey. We will have that survey online until June 11th, and then following that particular, we will close the survey at that time and then include that information in the report so that you all can, can use that information to evaluate what your constituents would like to see in their, what their transit needs are and would like to see in the final report. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Jorge.
Thank you, Sonia. So lastly, next steps, we are, of course, ongoing coordination with the Project Advisory Committee, which is the PAC. We have a meeting May 13th next week with PAC members. We're also, the next step is to identify transit needs, initiate, or the survey is out there right now. Please go and take the survey. Let your voice be heard. We're going to initiate a transit optimization task. Again, can we squeeze a little bit more service of what's currently running out there on the street transit-wise? And lastly, is to analyze travel patterns and markets to identify unmet needs and future growth areas. This is like a very complex model that helps us understand where people are coming from and going to in order to make the analysis and come before all the member agencies and show them some recommendations for potential future transit service. With that, this concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any member of the council have any questions? I do.
Thank you.
You work for MAG or for Valley Metro?
I work for Valley Metro.
Okay.
And I used to work for MAG, though.
Okay. MAG's funding part of this study, I would assume.
Mayor, members of the council, that is correct.
And the areas down here in the rural portion of the new MAG region, since we joined, were mainly between us and the possibility of the junior college out at Santan, Central Arizona College, and the commute on Hunt Highway, is probably where you're going to find the most. But I've got a question for you. How much input or study and coordination are you doing with ADOT on the rapid rail?
Mayor, members of the council, that's a very good question. We, we are looking at all the studies that have actually been created and compiled within the study area. And we, again, Mark Pierce saw, the co-project manager on this study, and he's a MAG employee, he's very in tune with the commuter rail and the intercity rail component, and has great relations and connections with ADOT staff. So he is in definite communication with them, and just to make sure that we understand what's being proposed and how that best meshes and fits into the analysis that we're doing for the study area on the bus side.
Does that also include the north-south corridor?
That is a very good question, and I would have to get back to you on that one, because I do not know the answer to that one.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other? Well, thank you very much, and all I can say is put your studies together with the other studies being going, that are going on, that we didn't have any input into, that we hope to be able to have more input into it with ADOT. We appreciate you coming down on this and recognize as a member of MAG in our area needs the public transportation, no need about it.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much. Good night.
Any other question? Okay.
Thanks for getting.
Thank you.
Item nine, Consent Agenda. All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A, Approval of Accepting the Register of Demands Ending March 31, 2014, in the amount of $1,616,075.5. Item B, Authorization of Entering Into an Intergovernmental Agreement for Provisional Services, or Provisions of Services with Penal County Recorders for Elections and Voter Registration Services. Item C, Resolution Number 1432-14, Adoption of a Resolution of the Town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona, Authorizing the Submission of an Application for State Housing Funds, Which May Include Federal Funding Through the Home Investment Partnership Program or State Housing Funds, Certifying that Said Application Meets the Community's Housing and Community Development Needs and the Requirements of the State Housing Programs, and Authorizing All Actions Necessary to Implement and Complete the Activities outlined in Said Application. Mayor, member of councils, that is your consent agenda.
Any member of the council have anything they'd like taken off? Does any member of the public have anything they'd like taken off the consent agenda? Sheen, I need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second? We have a motion in second to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
New Business A, Discussion on the Development of the Town of Florence Art Program. Ms. Evans will be handling this item. Ms. Evans?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. If you'll just give me a moment to get set up here. I have a brief PowerPoint. Thank you. I've been asked to provide some information about public art programs, and so I just wanted to spend a few minutes giving you the basics of what we typically find in public art programs in Arizona. There we go. Typically, in a public art program, the goals that we try to achieve are, first and foremost, to integrate public art into public buildings and spaces. And this helps create a sense of place for a community. It helps a community establish cultural landmarks. It cultural landmarks, it improves quality of life, which of course is important for our economic development efforts, because that is always one of the pieces in site selections for companies who are looking to relocate. So we want to certainly increase our sense of place here in Florence, and also promote Florence as a destination for arts and culture. I mean, we're known for our history here, and we certainly have a certain element of Western culture, and a public art program would also introduce the art element to that. Finally, one of the program goals would be to encourage public involvement in the process, and that happens in a couple of different ways. First and foremost, through arts and cultural commission, and there's also additional opportunities for the public to participate in a public art program with individual projects. So in Arizona, there are about 18 communities that have public art programs, and typically, they are funded and kind of managed through a percent-for-art ordinance, and this type of ordinance does two things. First of all, it establishes a funding mechanism for a public art program, and it also establishes an arts and culture commission that helps to manage that process, although it is an advisory commission to the town council that always has final approval on projects and plans and so forth. The percent-for-art ordinance allocates 1% of the total construction costs of eligible capital improvement projects that will be specifically designated for public art. And these types of ordinances focus on using those funds for the design, fabrication, installation of public art. They typically are not, the funds are not used for programming or other types of cultural activities. As I understand it, this year in the town budget for Florence, approximately $100,000 has been set aside if the council chooses to spend those funds on a public art program. As I mentioned briefly, this art ordinance also establishes an arts and culture commission that is served in an advisory capacity to the town council. And the commission's ultimate goal is to develop the annual public art project plan, and that's working with staff, that's where the commission would identify potential projects that could be accomplished over a specific period of time, whether it's a year, two years, or five years, and selecting projects from the capital improvement plan that would be suitable to incorporate a public art component to that project. So we assemble that list of projects, and then the commission would help with implementing this annual plan. The commission could also help promote the public art program, as well as coordinate specific programming activities. In addition to the public art project plan, the commission could also seek out other opportunities for projects and potential partners, especially for funding and that sort of thing. So the commission doesn't necessarily have to be, limit its focus to public art, it could expand upon that and include other cultural activities. So if the town council chooses to look into developing a public art program, there are certain things that can take place over the next few months to help implement that program. First of all, staff can draft the percent-for-art ordinance, that would again, give the town that funding mechanism, as well as a framework for management. And then, applications could be solicited for a new Florence Arts and Culture Commission, and then staff panel would review those applications and then make recommendations to the town council, who would appoint commission members. So a general timeframe for those activities would be late summer, early fall, with perhaps the final appointment of commission members in January of next year. And then, from there, the commission would begin work on drafting the public art project So that is a very brief overview of public art programs, and I would be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any member of the council have any question?
Just some comments. I had an opportunity to visit the Oro Valley art exhibits that they have in their area, and it really adds a lot to the community. I think that it's a very interesting opportunity to diversify some of the attractions that Florence has to offer, and I think it'll complement our historic elements that we already have going on for us. And I'm very interested in seeing how this comes out. Good presentation, thank you.
Jennifer, I am too. My first suggestion was that, early in the mornings, we can go down on Main Street and we'll just bronze Tom sitting there, parking bench. And I think that would start it off real well. And, oh, is that part of the report? Anyway, that's my suggestion for it.
Dylan.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Item B, discussion approval/disapproval of the fiscal year 2014, 2015 Employee Benefit Program with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Arizona for medical, Teladoc for 24/7 physical access benefits, Principal Financial Group for dental and life insurance, Vision Services Plan for vision insurance, EAP Preferred for Employee Assistance Program, Aflac for supplemental insurance products, and in Vision Source for, to administer our Section 125 Flexible Benefit Account Plan. Mr. Barber will be handling this item. Mr. Barber?
Mayor, and members of the council, we're asking this evening for your approval of a recommendation for our employee benefits program for the upcoming plan year, which coincides with fiscal year, starting in July 1st. You have all of the details in your packet. I'm going to focus on the largest component of that, that is the medical insurance. The town has insured its employees, eligible employees, since July 1st of 2009 in a high-deductible health savings account program, a plan designed that's different from the PPO or what have you. And the town has designed that program and has also contributed into employee HSA account for that particular period of time. So we've been in the plan that we currently have, this is completing our fifth year. We typically ask our agent broker representative to shop our coverage each year to determine what kind of renewal quote we're getting from our current carrier, and other opportunities are available out there for us. We were quite pleased this year to be able to have a number of good alternatives to select from, both in the HSA environment, as well as what's called the fully insured environment as well. And so, out of that, came our current recommendation to move out of the high-deductible HSA plan back into a conventional, more conventional PPO arrangement that offers copays in the physician's office or urgent care, and offers a multi-tiered drug plan. And this particular plan, employees are not on responsible first dollar, but rather in the scheduled benefits that's offered. The recommendation that's before you that involves particularly in the health and dental area, the medical and dental area, represents savings for both employees with dependent coverage and the town from our current program. Just like any other change, the change has questions with it, and we anticipate that there'll be a number of questions from our employees, and we're certainly making arrangements to answer those. We did survey our employees in an independent survey conducted by our agent broker representative last fall, I believe, and got their opinions about what we offered and what have you. And it's always a challenge to try to find the best for the most, and we believe that this recommendation does that. I'll leave it at that and try to answer any questions you have, and hopefully, many of your questions were answered in the information that was provided in your packet.
Council, does anyone have any questions they'd like to ask our HR director at this time? Go ahead.
I have two questions. One was just a clarification for the benefit of everybody. Where it says recommended plan, PPO S500 and 9050, can you explain what the 9050 stands for or represents?
The, those are percentages, so it's a, we talk about copayments, and then we talk about coinsurance. So typically, if someone goes into the hospital, I think that's probably the better example that that would be used. Under a recommendation with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Arizona, if someone go into the hospital, they would be responsible for the deductible, and then 10% of the bill up to the maximum out-of-pocket. And that's not unlike what we're doing right now.
Okay. And then the other question I have is, I know, as I was reading it, I considered the employees that have already met their $2,500 deductible from the years prior, so since this is taking effect in July, would they encounter the new deductible in addition to that $2,500 from the previous HSA?
Councilmember Walter, you're referring to the difference between the plan year and the deductible year, and the plan year being July 1st to June 30th, the deductible year being a calendar year. And there is no question but that there are issues that overlay. But like most group insurance, employees will receive credit for amounts they pay toward the deductible in the first six months of the year. There's differences between HSA and the PPO plan, and the fact of the matter is that there's just some issues coming out of or going into an HSA that could pose some additional out-of-pocket for certain employees. It's been described from time to time that an HSA plan works really well for those people who are very, very healthy or very, very sick, and I suspect that's probably the case. For those employees who have paid the total out-of-pocket max, if you will, for in the first six months of the year, are going to get credit for a carryover deductible, but because every person's individual circumstances are different, I hesitate to represent a particular answer to that, except to say that employees receive credit for the deductible they paid in the first six months of the year to the balance of the year.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that, and I also want to say, great job presenting all of this information in the packet and going out and finding it.
Any other comment? Scott, thank you. Motion. Okay, we need a motion?
I'll make a motion. We accept the benefit package renewal, staff for fiscal year 2014, 2015, with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Arizona, and Teladoc 24/7, Principal Financial Group.
Oh, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Employee Benefit Program with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Arizona, Teladoc, Principal Financial, Vision Service Plan, EAP Preferred Assistance, Aflac for fiscal year 2014, 2015. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item C, discussion approval/disapproval of setting a date to approve the Johnson Utilities LLC Purchase Agreement and Management Agreement. Just for the record, the staff has added both the purchase agreement and the management agreement to the agenda packet, and it is available to the public. Mayor, at this time, I will turn over the meeting to you.
It's our time, and it's our decision on what we want to do on this, as far as bringing this to a vote. And the, my preference is that we take and accept what we got from our staff on the five-year management agreement. I know the majority of you probably are not in agreement with it. I think it's something we need to do for the benefit of the Town of Florence, and I think the issues that were brought up to us in executive session can be addressed by all parties concerned, and that is my statement on it. But we do need a motion on what we have in front of us tonight.
The motion that's in front of us tonight is to set a date.
Right.
We also remember that we did put up to the public the right to vote on this issue. It is my belief that if we vote on this to accept or deny prior to the public's vote, we are sending a message to the public as to why we're voting, why should they? At this time, I would like to have a date set after the public vote. Anyone else wish to speak, go ahead, otherwise, I will make a motion.
Any other discussion? Now, Tom, I just, the opposite side, I don't think the public would look at it that way. I think that they would look at it, the council has agreed to it, if we agree to it. And
That's what I'm saying.
There's a time element involved that we're aware of in front of the Corporation Commission, and I think it's very imperative for the continuation of this program that we set that prior to the vote, because the time element on it is not going to be good, what needs to be done in front of the Corporation Commission. And Danny, would you guys like to hear from Mr. Johnson?
Absolutely, yeah.
Danny?
Mayor, town council, Daniel Hodges with Johnson Utilities. Thank you for the moment to speak on the motion. Just want to start off and say that we've been working in good faith with the town on the possible purchase of Johnson Utilities since last, I believe it was September. In good faith, we've gone forward with the town, and along with the town's consultants, to do an engineering study, an accounting study, and an economic study. In discussions with staff, it's understanding that we, at that point in time, we'd enter into a purchase agreement with Johnson Utilities, so that not only we knew we had a deal, but also the residents knew what the deal was, so they knew what would be voted on. We've been out in the community with, as I believe the council knows, with numerous community events, and that's one of the main things that we have been asked, is, well, where's the purchase agreement, what's the deal with the town? And our basically response was, it is coming, we're just working out the legal issues with the town. I think that the mayor brought it up, but we have also a proceeding in front of the Corporation Commission. That proceeding is, going forward, we're going to hearing on May 19th. It has been requested by the judge in that proceeding, basically a request by council, to have an executed purchase agreement before that time.
Excuse me, you said, May 19th?
May 19th.
Not June 19th?
May 19th.
Thank you.
May 19th is the date. Sure.
May, I explained that the evidentiary hearing in front of the administrative law judge is May 19th. The open meeting of the Corporation Commission to render a final decision is on June 10th. That is what I explained. Go ahead.
As part of that, with the Corporation Commission, the judge and the parties involved need to see what the terms are for that hearing, so they've asked, and obviously, we're running close-up against that date, to have the agreement executed prior to that date as soon as possible. Also, from a Johnson Utilities standpoint, we've expended an enormous amount of money. We know that there's still things that the town staff are looking at as subject to a deal that's this size, but as part of the agreements, the agreements are going to be subject to the vote of the public. That specifically being in the agreements that, you know, the public, there is a vote, and as Johnson used to say, we're welcome and we're looking forward to having the public vote on this issue. But I think it's important, just being out in the public, that they know what those terms are and what they are actually voting on, so they know it's not, nothing's going to change down the road for them. And I'll just wrap it up, that as far as with this and us expending the amount of money that we have and going forward, this has been good faith with the town, but we're coming to a point in time over the last, since last August, that we need to know that there is a deal in place. We have been, and up until even prior to that point in time, we've had several people asked to purchase Johnson Utilities, but as the council knows, we do have a first right of refusal with the town, and in good faith, we came to work out a deal with the town first. So we believe we've done that and fulfilled our obligations, and that's, we just asked that the town council, you know, be, bow deal. the, the town council, you know, be, both either up and down on the agreements. Thank you. Mr. Drummond has a few words.
Yeah, I'd just like to, Mayor and council members, make clear that the agreement itself doesn't unconditionally commit the town to purchase the assets, any more than the agreement unconditionally requires Johnson Utilities to sell the assets. There are conditions in the contract which benefit both the seller and the buyer, which will need to be satisfied in order for the transaction to be consummated. Those conditions include, as Mr. Hodges stated, the, the positive results from the election later this month, the approval of the Corporation Commission, and the agreement of the Phoenix IDA to issue bonds. So again, I'd like to make clear that the agreement itself doesn't commit the town to do anything, other than to proceed and go forward in good faith and to try to achieve these conditions. So I want to make that clear, not only to this council, but also to the electors, that there is nothing that requires the town to purchase the assets simply by executing the purchase agreement. There are conditions that have to be satisfied in the contract, which is typical of any contract to purchase or sell assets.
But whatever way this council goes today, it's going to sway the vote of those that are voting. That's why some of us believe we should have the vote prior to us going ahead and giving our decision.
Well, that isn't, our intent is, is to persuade the voters to vote yes, simply because we're asking the council to adopt this agreement. There are some competing needs. I mean, we, we are having difficulty getting the Corporation Commission to approve the transaction without an executed agreement. We cannot start proceedings with the Phoenix IDA to issue bonds without having an executed agreement. So we're not going to be able to satisfy, I think, everyone's concerns, but we spent a considerable period of time negotiating this agreement. And, and we weren't intending to negotiate the agreement in earnest as we have and then wait either for an election or for the town then to review due diligence materials. We wanted to do things concurrently instead of sequentially, to be more efficient, to save the town money, to save Johnson Utilities money. And we are happy to educate the voters and, and make clear to the voters that there's no commitment from the town at this point to purchase the assets simply by executing a purchase agreement. The purchase agreement's available for inspection, for review by the voters, and they can clearly see that these conditions in the contract have to be satisfied before either party is obligated to close.
Let me.
That's very possible, but remember something. We just received the agreement and the management agreement today, tonight. We haven't had time to read this either.
But we are not, at this point, asking you to approve of the transaction. We are simply asking you to set a date to approve of the transaction.
Okay. Now, you're saying, tonight, we should just set a date?
I believe that's what the agenda calls for, Vice Mayor.
That's correct. That's correct. And that was my first point. We need to set a date. It's just that I don't believe we should do this prior to the people voting. That's all.
And, and again, my concern is respectfully, that until we can get an agreement signed by the town, we don't have anything to go to the Corporation Commission with or to the Phoenix IDA to get those processes started. And if we don't start those things now, we're just going to continue to delay the process.
Mr. Minato.
Senate four.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Our obligation, I started talking.
No, I have it, Valerie. Mr. Minato, you just heard him state that there's nothing there that will, about the signing the agreement. I, I believe it's my understanding that you said if we sign the agreement, that we can't stop it from going through, or it puts us in a liability. Is that correct?
Well, Mayor, I, I would respectfully suggest that what we discussed in the executive session.
Stay there.
At this time.
Okay. Valerie?
Our obligation is to the voters of the town of Florence, even though people are saying that they're not obligated, they won't have to pay any money. But if all things don't go right, they will be obligated. And my opinion is that we should not disrespect our voters to make a decision to set a meeting prior to the vote being taken. I think we can set a meeting to discuss this after the vote.
Anyone else have anything they'd like to say?
Sure. Go ahead, Tom.
I'm, I'm optimistic about this transaction. I think there's a lot of great opportunities in it. I, you know, as mentioned before, there's still a lot of, a lot of things that we need to take a look at. There's, there's maybe a possibility of, of some changes, even from what we just received today, as Vice Mayor Smith mentioned, that this is the first time we've seen it. We haven't had a chance to give any input on what's in there. And I don't know if, if there's, if, if we do set something, is there still the opportunity to make some recommendations or some changes that, that we see? So there, there's still, there's still things that we need to look at in this.
If I can add one thing, that, those two agreements are the product of a number of months of work between the utility companies, attorneys, and consultants, together with the town's attorneys and consultants. So this is not an agreement that we've prepared that has not already received input from the town's consultants.
But has not received all the input from the council, which is what counts.
Understood.
In, in your opinion, is the town in receipt of everything that they've requested for this? Has the attorney received all the information that they have requested for this?
I believe that's probably a better question for Mr. Minato to answer. Have you received everything that you need in connection with the purchase agreement and the management agreement?
No. Thank you.
And Mr. Minato may be referring to some of the due diligence materials, which we, again, have been assembling and which are available for review by the town's consultants. And in the purchase agreement, one of the conditions to closing is the town's review of those materials and its reasonable approval of those materials.
Is that correct, Mr. Minato?
Mr. Drummond asserted a provision in the decree, in the agreement, which came after our last meeting with them on Friday, to allow as a condition of the buyer's obligation to close escrow, its review and satisfaction or approval with the requested material. However, I will reiterate that that term is like any other term that could be put into a contract, and it's subject to interpretation and construction, depending on how you choose to, to utilize it, either to someone's advantage or disadvantage. And it's incumbent, I believe, on the town to review the material prior to the council's decision whether to execute the agreement or not.
Mr. Montoya. And all the information that we've.
Mayor.
And all the information that we received, in your opinion, as our town manager, what is your recommendation to us?
Mayor, council, let me, let me put it this way. Do I think this is a great deal? Absolutely. I do.
Keep speaking into the mic, because you're, when you take away from it, the people on television can't hear.
Apologize. Do I think this is a great deal? I do. Have the attorneys received all the documents that they need at this point in time to validate a few of the numbers? They, they do not. Do I think this is a good thing for Florence moving forward? I do. But as Mr. Minato said, having the agreement, the, some of the items not there that are in the appendices, should be in the appendices, is causing some concern with, with our council and our outside council. So that is my, my recommendation is, I think it's a good deal, but those items are, are being requested by the attorneys.
Is there some reason that the, the town's attorneys have not received the information they requested?
Well, it hasn't been a refusal on behalf of Johnson Utilities. We, we've been working in earnest, again, over a number of months to develop these two agreements. And it was our understanding that the agreements would be entered into and we would provide the town with the due diligence materials that we've been provided, and that the town would have an opportunity to review those materials prior to closing and prior to having any obligation to close. And that, in my world, that's a typical scenario where you, parties enter into an agreement with subject twos, the buyer has an opportunity to review the due diligence materials, and the due diligence materials are not approved by the buyer, the buyer has a right to not consummate the transaction. So I don't think what we are suggesting is at all unusual. What may be unusual is the fact that it was asked that the town be given an opportunity to review those materials shortly before we, you know, finish the negotiation and the documentation of the contract. That came as a surprise to us.
Your scenario might work in the corporate world, but when you're dealing with government entities and taxpayer dollars were held to a higher standard. So please take that into consideration as well.
I, I understand that and I respect that. But again, as I, as I mentioned before, we have, we have a number of masters to satisfy on, in this transaction. Obviously, the town is probably the most important. But until we can get a signed purchase agreement, we're unable to really gain any traction with the Corporation Commission or with the Phoenix IDA.
What do the, what effects do the delay in this have?
Well, I can let Danny Hodges speak a little bit more with regard to the Corporation Commission, since he deals with them. But it's put Johnson Utilities in a bit of an awkward position, because we were under the impression that we were at the stage where we could have the execution, I should say, the adoption and the execution of a contract by the town. So we provided certain assurances to the Corporation Commission that this would occur, and now we're going to have to go back to the Corporation Commission and explain to them that there may be further delay.
My name is George Johnson. We've dealt in good faith with all your people. When we had other offers, we came to you and offered you a deal that was much more advantageous and advantageous than what we could have gotten. We thought that you were the steward to take this vision and dream forward and complete it. Now, I'm kind of at a loss for words, because you get kind of emotional. But it was my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the town wanted their economic study by Dan Jackson, they wanted engineering study and appraisal by their engineer, and a study by your accountant, Henry and Horn. That's been done. Now, I was always under the impression that this is, it's not commercial, it's not government, it's a, a correct practice, that there's, you have to come to a point where you say, okay, we like the deal, but it is subject, line extension agreements to all these different agreements. And I'm sure your attorneys are competent to do that. If we can't have that, we're just rolling along, rolling along. We look like fools, you people look like fools, and it's not right. So please, in all honesty, either vote is up or down. Thank you.
Any other question? Do you have something?
I have a question. My microphone is off, I apologize. I don't have a question, but I, I do believe that we need to set a date. We need to make sure whatever documentation that is missing is given to the proper channels, so this way it can be analyzed, so we can come to that mutual final agreement.
Again, Mr. Montoya, if the information that we were requesting was delivered tomorrow, how long would it take to, to have it looked at and get back, be able to get back to us with a, as close as can be?
Mayor, council, I, I would have to pass that question on to Mr. Minato, because those are legal documents, line extension agreements, those type of things, and there's quite a few of them, so I don't know the magnitude of how long that will take.
Mr. Minato?
Mayor, I, I cannot tell you to the day how long it would take. I understand there are approaching close to 500 line extension agreements. There are 52 master utility agreements. There are 52 pieces of real property or something in that number, which belong to Johnson Utilities, that are the subject of survey and title reports. And I think it would be incumbent on the town to, after review of those, to find out what is involved in getting policies of title insurance. And we have included in the real property is a golf course. So I can't tell you to the day. I can promise you, Mayor and members of the council, that if we get the information, I will endeavor to analyze it, along with the legal staff that are working with me, Mr. Cofiso and Mr. Faith, and whoever else might be needed to try to digest that information. But I, I can't really put a timeline on it. I, I would like to think we could do it in a reasonable amount of time. I don't believe we could do it prior to the election.
And, and I think that's the concern of Johnson Utilities, Mayor and council members, is, is that, you know, we, we can't get any definition from, from your consultants in terms of when they can review these things. And that's why I had expressed before, that I think we can do this, you know, concurrently instead of sequentially, give the opportunity to the town, as we always intended to do, to review these materials. We're not trying to deprive the town of that at all. But what we'd like to do is, is, again, in the contract, have that be a condition to the town's obligation to close, so that it can review those materials, have the time to do so, instead of having to wait to sign a contract, or, excuse me, instead of having to wait for the town to review those materials before we can even sign a contract.
Well.
And, and from Johnson Utilities' perspective, it's, it's spent tens of thousands of dollars just on these title reports, which we are prepared to provide to the town. So Johnson Utilities has, has made the commitment to provide these things and has spent the money to do so.
Well, your honor, if, with, Mayor, with all, sorry, he is occasionally referred to as your honor, however. Mayor, with all due respect, I have the highest respect, highest respect for Mr. Johnson and for Mr. Johnson's team of professionals. They're all consummate professionals, they're highly trained, and they're very good at what they do. I, I have to say that when we met with Mr. Johnson's people on Friday, this was not the first time that we requested this information. And I cannot give you the dates, I would have to go and look through my emails and all of the other things that we use. But I can promise you that we have been requesting this information for quite some time. And one of the objectives of our meeting on Friday was to find out if, in fact, we were going to be handed this information. And we left that meeting without it. So, but this is not something that occurred for the first time on Friday. I, as I said, I mean, all, all we would need to substantiate that is. As I said, I mean, all we would need to substantiate that is to go looking through the emails for the last several months. We've been requesting this information from them, and Mr. Johnson himself told me at a previous meeting that was, I think approximately, maybe it was three weeks ago, that, for example, I believe he said something like 80 percent of the properties had been surveyed, title work, title reports had been completed, and I left that meeting thinking, well, that's great. I'm delighted to hear that they're almost completed with it and will soon have it. So it's not, this is not an issue that just came up last Friday. I can assure you of that.
Yeah, I'd like to react to that. We thought the meeting last Friday was to see if the agreement was in a form to present to this council. That was our understanding of what the meeting was. It wasn't our understanding that we had to provide the due diligence materials before the contract was approved by the town or was executed by the town. Granted, Mr. Manato has made references to the due diligence materials, but because of the size of the system, it takes some time to pull those materials together. There are a large number of line extension agreements, master utility agreements, title reports, and so on. Again, we are not here to tell the town that you can't review those. We were just caught by surprise that now the town's consultants want to see those before the agreement gets approved or executed by the town. That was not our understanding last Friday. As a matter of fact, Mr. Manato called the meeting himself and said he was calling the meeting to see if the agreement was in a final form to present to this council. That was our charge last Friday.
Well, I've made no representations to Mr. Johnson or Mr. Drummond that the agreement would be executed by the town council if I was able to tell them. I mean, I can't make that representation on behalf of the council. We know this. My point in going to their office Friday was to see if we had reached a stage in the negotiations where we could say, okay, we have basically done all we can do, I've done all I can do for the town, he's done all he can do for Mr. Johnson's company, and the negotiations are basically over, and this is what I'm going to put on the table for the council to look at. I certainly made no representation, however, that that would result in them executing the agreement. I just wanted, what I brought to the council tonight for executive session, I wanted to be comfortable in saying that on behalf of the town, I did all I could do, and I believe on behalf of Mr. Drummond and his folks that they had done all they could do, and now it would be up for the council to make a decision about whether they liked it or not.
What are your feelings to the potential or the possibility of having us review this and recommending changes to it?
Mayor, Councilman, we've gone since, I think it's August of 2013. We have worked with your staff, and we do have a real problem with Mr. Manato. Excuse me for saying this in public, but instead of looking at the global picture and putting it in context of a good, reasonable contract for the purchase of our assets, there's been last-minute things thrown at us, thrown at us, thrown at us. We have tried to comply. It's come to the point, we're all foolish, where there is nothing that says that if we comply with all these things and they're correct, that the town will approve it. You could take us on for months and months, and that's not fair. That's not fair, and I don't think it's, you people would do that to us. So really, I think what we really need is either approve our contract subject to the conditions that are appropriate or let us go home. Thank you.
First of all, I resent being called foolish, but I'll let that go. I'm not going to make an issue with it, but I resent being called foolish. They requested those items some time ago. We seem to not want to answer that question. We're kind of avoiding it and trying to stick to the point that you want to be able to fast-track this without us having all the information we need to do our due diligence.
Can I address the council, please, Mayor and council? Prior to this last Friday's meeting, we had another meeting with all the attorneys to try to put this to rest. It's very expensive for both the town and Johnson Utilities to go forward. During that meeting, it was brought up about the agreements and having the 500 line extension agreements. We've gone forward in good faith and scanned all those agreements for the town, but on top of that, title work was mentioned. There's numerous things, and we've been going through title work process, not at the request of the town. We just happened to start, as Mr. Manato said, we got to jump on it, and we're putting this title work together. Normally, title work, we wouldn't have even started the process until you have a purchase agreement. The items that are asked for, no respect to Mr. Manato, but we talked about it in that meeting three weeks ago. There was never agreement, and it was talked about doing a subject two, so we had no idea that we were going to be held up tonight regarding additional items, and the town saying we need additional things until it was brought up this last Friday. So we have, I guess, a disagreement on that regard, and again, we ask for, either the town wants to go forward or not. This is, well, Mr. Johnson.
We can't be put in the position that we go down the line, and then because one thing Mr. Manato doesn't like, he can throw out the whole thing, and then we're all fools. So I think this is the time to take action and make it subject to all the conditions that are appropriate and reasonable to be complete. That's all we ask.
Mayor, I'd like to have Mr. Cofiso, our bond counsel, address the council, please.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Michael Cofiso with Greenberg Tri-Rig. As you guys know, I've just represented the town for 20-odd years, and I just want to step back for a minute and talk about these things anecdotally. I get to usually be in the room with a lot of different municipalities when they buy utility systems because there's about a handful of us that do the kind of stuff I do around the state. That's help you guys borrow money to do these kinds of things. Lots of town attorneys, lots of private attorneys do this kind of stuff, but I, fortunately or unfortunately, am in the room for the bond financing portion. I helped Queen Creek with their most recent one. I helped the city of Sholo on a couple acquisitions. I did the town of Carefree's. I could go on with the full list. I would say to you, just to put this in context, because I think this is important and needs to be kept in mind, you're talking about $121 million acquisition. I don't know of any that are close to that. This is 10 times larger probably than the largest one that's been done by a municipality that I'm aware of. When you start talking about those kinds of numbers, the diligence gets deeper. I beg to differ with what you've heard tonight. I beg to differ with Mr. Manato's attempt to be cautious about this being criticized. The larger these acquisitions are, the more time we take with upfront diligence. The town of Queen Creek was a good example. We did all the diligence prior to even go into the election on that one. We knew what we were going to buy. So I don't think what Mr. Manato is suggesting here is unreasonable. We're not buying a house. This is not like a thousand house sales that get done every day in the United States. As I've said to some of you personally, these things come few and far between. There are lots of contingencies, there are lots of things that can change the price of this. I agree with the manager 100 percent, and I've said it. This is a fantastic deal for the town. Mr. Manato's responsibility, though, is to the citizens of the town, and he, I think, has been judicious in trying to be careful about how he's approaching this. The diligence that he is requesting is not unusual. Dan Jackson of Economist.com, your utilities consultant, has recommended the same diligence. He's used an analogy of buying a car without driving it, of buying a house without going into it. Again, I think those are apt analogies here. I don't think what's being asked here, given the size of this transaction, is unusual. If this is a $1.2 million transaction, yeah, maybe you'd go into it a little bit more cavalier. But remember, we had a transaction here where we were able to use an improvement district required utility system. That one was a small one. It ended up costing you a lot of money relative to the size of the acquisition. So again, I think it's important to keep all this in context and not forget about the fact that we're talking about $121 million acquisition. That's probably 10 times larger than anything I can think of off the top of my head. I don't remember what the Queen Creek one even was. But again, the kind of diligence that's being asked here, I don't think is unusual. Asking for the diligence to be done upfront isn't unusual. A lot of these things could drastically affect both considerations of price, considerations of operation, consideration of management, consideration of how much additional money might have to be borrowed, all those things that have to be factored in. So again, I don't think any of this is unusual, and I personally don't think that Mr. Manato deserves the criticism he's been getting for the work he's been doing.
And we're not here to criticize anyone. We're simply here to express our views in connection with the transaction, and there's lots of ways to do transactions, but I don't believe that it's unusual for parties that enter into an agreement and allow the buyer to conduct due diligence before it's obligated to close. That happens every day, and the town is going to have the opportunity to invoke those clauses. The town's going to have an opportunity to review the due diligence. We're not suggesting that it doesn't. We're simply suggesting that we've got to start someplace. And I find it interesting tonight that while we've been waiting to come up here, one of the issues is the annexation, where the town is seeking the agreement of landowners to become part of the town. We're simply asking the town to enter into an agreement to see if, in fact, the parties can agree to consummate a transaction wherein the town purchases the assets of Johnson Utilities.
Any other comment? Well, folks, you've heard a whole bunch of comments made tonight, and we need a motion on that.
I'd like to make a motion that will allow two things. It will allow us to read these agreements that we just received today. It will allow the public to vote on it without our judgment swaying their vote. Therefore, I will put a motion on the floor and set a date of May 27th to approve or disapprove the Johnson Utility LLC purchase agreement and management agreement.
I'll second.
We have a motion in the second to set May 27th, 2014.
That'll do.
Okay. Well, I was thinking of your birthday for the, I guess, the either the a or nay on the purchase of Johnson Utilities. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I call for the questions. Roll call, vote, please.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Woolridge?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyah?
Aye.
Mayor Rankin?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Departmental reports, you have the departmental reports in front of you. Charles, do you have a report?
No, sir. I do not have a report for you all this week. However, I would like to mention that starting tomorrow night at 6:00 PM, the crosswalks in the downtown area are going to be cleaned up, the old white ones, those will be cleaned up, and they'll be finishing about 11:00 PM tomorrow night.
Okay. Any member of the council have any questions for our department heads?
Well, I'm just wondering where's the county on, can they move those barricades or whatever in front of the county building back, you know, at least to the sidewalk so they're not sticking out in the road?
Is that part of the call to the council or? That'd be in. Yeah. No, I think he's asking Wayne. Okay. Wayne?
Do you want me to address that?
You're the one in charge.
Could you repeat the question?
I am the one in charge.
The, you know, the fencing around the county building that burned up, you know, that fencing around it? They've got the front end all boarded up, cleared to the sidewalk. I don't know, why is that fencing out in the highway so far? That's what I'm curious.
There's a structural modification that needs to take place on Sixth Street, and that's been approved by right-of-way permit, and the county contractor hasn't started that work. That's the only reason that barricade is up like that, to allow for the structural stabilization of the exterior walls.
And you have no, you don't have a schedule on it or?
Oh, no. We issued the permit over four to six weeks ago, as I recall.
They started this morning. We can address, you can address that and call the council, Tommy. Any other questions for any department head? Hearing none, we call, hearing start and go, second call to the public. Anybody from the public have anything they'd like to say? Hearing none, I call, close, call the public, call the council. Tommy?
Pinnacle restoration, started remediation of the interior contents of the building on Sixth Street this morning. They added another dumpster. They've got a lot of stuff they need to remediate through the front of that building as well as through the side. One of the first things I asked them to do is to move the dumpsters and pull that fence in as close as possible, as soon as possible, which they will be doing. I don't have a timeline on when the completion is. As soon as I hear anything, I'll let you know.
Kara?
I know the young lady that spoke this evening has already left, but I want to give kudos to her for coming out and speaking to the council in an open public forum, and hopefully we can get that addressed for her this week. Thank you.
Bill?
I have nothing.
Come. Tommy?
Not tonight.
Me neither. Need a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion in the second to adjourn on a favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Most carried, we're adjourned.